Last meeting, watched EMS come up here and ask for an ambulance. And I'm sitting here looking at checks that were written on behalf of our tax dollars for $29,327.66, $390,027.18, which would have balked way more than an ambulance that we need. Another for $386,379.51, $378,682.76, for a total of $1,184,417.11 of our tax dollars that we don't get back. So who's in charge of handing the credentials and why was everything passed off and why wasn't we aware until last month? That's my question to counsel. That's our money. EMS sat right here and begged for two new ambulances. Whether it's old members or new, everyone had access to this. Here's all the papers. Here's the email conversations between Ann and the counsel. Here's everything. Here's the records. Here's the payments. Here's the statements from the IRS. Their feedback. So everyone was aware of this but us. And our county is suffering because of it. So why wasn't they given the credentials? And who's in charge of that? Why did we wait until last month to find this out? And then Ms. Johnson comes out of retirement to try to get this fixed and it seems like stones are being tossed her way when clearly, a direct quote, I asked Mrs. Bass if she had made Ms. Johnson where?
Mr. Chair, not sp- now it's names.
Got you. She stated she did not receive any correspondence of the IRS during any financial oversight. So that clearly states that false accusations have been made, but yet we're out of millions of dollars here and penalties are still coming. You guys know that. You have the same paperwork I have in this book. You were aware of it. You knew it. So what are we gonna do? And who's responsible? That's my question to all y'all. This is our county and we have people begging for EMS ambulances? Thank y'all.
Everett Stubbs.
I recognize some of the faces up here, but really just wanted to join y'all tonight and introduce myself. My name is Everett Stubbs. I'm an attorney in Chester and I'm running for South Carolina Senate District 17. So, you know, obviously every county has its obstacles and problems. One of the things that I'm campaigning on is a true partnership between local government and state-level government. That being said, I felt like this was an appropriate time, it being the first of the year, to come on in and say hello, tell you who I am and let you know that I am running for South Carolina Senate District 17. We actually, I'm excited we joined the chamber. We're opening a branch of our law firm, Gas, Marion and Sells, right here in beautiful Windsboro, where 2B Stitch used to be located. And we're excited to have a footprint right here in Fairfield County, in the heart in Windsboro. So win, lose, or draw, whatever happens with the Senate district seat, I hope to gain y'all's support, but more importantly, I hope to gain your trust and hopefully be a valued citizen, a corporate citizen of Fairfield County. So thank you for your time. Like I said, I know there's plenty of obstacles. Every government deals with it, especially county level. But if I do, if the good Lord finds it fit, that I'll be the next senator representing this county. I want to be a resource and the conduit between the local government and state government. Thank you.
IT, we're receiving messages still that is not working. They showing that it is working.
It's not. I'm hearing it. She's saying it's not working. She's sitting there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Goldbach, you can proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Don Goldbach, District 2. I'd like to address the agenda item regarding the finance report for December. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Johnson for returning my call today with Ms. Mozy. I do appreciate that. Appreciate the time that was spent on the phone. Thank you very much. There's been a lot in the paper recently about this whole IRS situation. And I'm trying to understand the details, but it's been very confusing so far. I think I still have some more work to do to really understand what happened. But I think, my understanding of the way this organization functions is that the counsel is ultimately responsible and accountable for understanding how our taxpayer dollars are spent. And my understanding is the first payment to the IRS was pretty substantial, was made in June of 2023. And when the announcement was made by Ms. Johnson at the December 11th council meeting, it looked like a lot of members didn't understand or didn't know what was happening. That, to me, is a surprise. I think counsel should know where our money is spent, especially when it's more than $1 million, especially when it's something for the federal government that's a required process and required forms for healthcare. If you did know about it and didn't say anything about it, I'm not sure which is worse. You know, we should, we should know about that. And I hope through more transparency and some of the work and what Brandon was saying, you know, some of the information that's available, hopefully we can get to the bottom of this. Hopefully we can prevent this from happening again in the future. I drove home from that meeting, I was fuming and I was thinking about all the people that come up here and said, "We need this in this county. We need EMS support. We need an animal shelter that's more humane. We need so many things." And to think that $1.4 million was just thrown away. I mean, I was, two weeks before Christmas, I didn't feel real good. So I hope that this counsel takes this very seriously and takes steps to make sure that this doesn't happen again. Thank you for your time.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright. Ridgeway, District 1. The purpose of a budget is to support the county's plans and goals. In other words, the plans and goals come before the budget. You can't do a budget without having a plan, or otherwise you're just wasting people's money. You're a rudderless boat drifting on Lake Watery during a storm. Now, the bad news about that is, we haven't followed what we're supposed to do by developing a comprehensive plan. The last comprehensive plan we have on the county's website expired in 2021. We're supposed to be doing a new plan every 10 years. We're supposed to be reviewing those plans every five years. We have done neither. We don't have a new plan. We have an archaic plan and we can't go forward. We're not ready to do a budget until we have a plan. Now, it's been about a month. I went to a planning meeting. They said that we were gonna have a plan, hopefully by the end of this month. Have you guys seen that plan? Or have you approved it? Until you do, a budget is useless. The budget is supposed to be formed around the plan, to support the plan, to connect the plan, a comprehensive plan. It's a playbook and it supports the playbook. It has a vital function. But if we don't have a plan, how can you do a budget? We're not ready to do a budget. And you got a long ways to do, even if plan's in the works, to get it approved. Back in December 22 of '22, a plan was promised for in January. A year later, we still don't have it. And we still not ready for a budget. The other issue, as you've seen tonight, we're not ready to do a budget because we don't even know where we stand in finances. This last year, counting the latest fiasco with IRS, we'll probably have budget amendments totaling $5 million, which means we don't know where we're going. We didn't know last year. We didn't know this year. And yes, we're right on. We've asked for it in the previous years. We've gone three straight years missing the audit plan. How can you do a budget without being, the finances right? You can't. The forensic audit is the only solution here. We've got to have a plan and a forensic audit. We've asked for both for a couple of years now. Maybe now we'll finally see the light. A budget that this, I guarantee you, when the audit comes in, the audit results on this budget from this past year, it'll be a disaster. We'll miss our marks by a mile, as we did the previous year, because we didn't plan, because we didn't do a forensic audit. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Next, we are down to item eight, public hearings, none. We are down to item nine, ordinance resolutions and orders. 9A, third and final reading. Audit number 829, ordinance by Fairfield County Council to amend ordinance number 815, establishing the operating and capital budget for the operation of the county government of Fairfield County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023, and other matters related thereto. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Can you explain that point? Can that fix one?
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Dylan Pullen, on December 11th, did a presentation requesting $70,000 for the visitor's center, the relocation guide, the visitor's guide, and a director of tourism and community relations. And there was a presentation done and you all had the opportunity to ask questions. So would you like him to step back up? Do you have any additional questions?
This money's not coming out of the budget. Correct.
It's not coming out of the general fund, no.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? See it none, all those in favor. All those opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0 on 9A, ordinance number 829. 9B was moved to after executive session. Now we are down to item 10, board and commission minutes. This is for information only, disabilities and special needs, 61623, 81823, and 102023. Item 11, board and commission appointments. For 11A, we have Kennedy Robertson from District 1 to go to the library board. It's been moved and properly seconded to put Mr. Robertson on the library board from District 1. Is there any discussion? See it none, all those in favor. All those opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0. Mr. Kennedy Robertson is appointed to the library board. Item 11B, behavioral health, Helen Johnson from District 3. It's been moved and properly seconded to put Ms. Helen Johnson from District 3 on behavioral health. Is there any discussion? See it none, all those in favor. All those opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0. Ms. Helen Johnson from District 3 is appointed to the behavioral health board. Next, we are down to 13, new business. This is a motion that Mr. Roof made for a forensic audit, a discussion. If Mr. Roof wants to bring up the discussion and then Mr. Morgan and Ms. Johnson could comment.
Yeah, the purposes I saw for this was just to clear the air, is not pointing fingers. From the way I see it, it's just so that everything is out in the open and clear everything up. So if there's nothing there, then there's nothing there, but there's just so much out there that appears to be unclear, and I think that's the purpose. And there was, what, $1.1.45 million, whatever it is, a lot of money. So I don't know, and I think Ms. Johnson's gonna find out the, an estimate for the cost of that audit. And I could doubt where it could be more than 1% or 2% of that money. So I think it's, you know, it's a small amount just to, I think, satisfy and clear, clear this matter up. And so that's, that's the way I feel, so.
Ms. Waring.
I think that the citizens are wanting this. I think that they are demanding it from us as a council. We are the governing body of Fairfield County. We have to speak for our citizens. And not answering a phone call from the voters, that doesn't give us any answers. The only way to put confidence back in the administration and council is to, and clear all minds that all above is, that all is above board and all avenues have been explored and answered. A new administrator coming in deserves it. And we know that the $1.2 million in fines had to be paid. We know that. But at the very least, we didn't get to vote on it and we didn't amend their budget. So let's clear all of our minds that nothing else is in hiding and will come out. I think we have no choice. We owe it to ourselves and we owe it to this county and the citizens here that are looking to us for leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waring. Anyone else on that particular issue? I think Ms. Johnson already stated earlier that she would research it for you and get back with you for the information. Next, we are, next we are down to 14, county administrators' report. Ms. Williams and Ms. Johnson.
Members of counsel, just want to let you all know that we have scheduled the council work session, similar to what we had last year for January 30th, 2024, starting at 9:00 a.m. Once again, just like last year, we would hold the work session at the Midland Northeast Campus. We'll be going over the upcoming budget process, going over the various economic development strategic plan, and the next steps for that strategic plan, and also some presentations with some project updates from different, from different department heads. So we do plan to, again, try to be done about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock like last year, but we are planning to have that council work session all day that day. Yes, sir.
Is, I might be mistaken, January 30th, that's not the day of the ribbon cutting?
We double-checked the ribbon cutting to the next day.
Is it? Okay. My bad. Thank you.
So you stole my thunder. That was gonna be, are any questions on the work session before I move to ribbon cutting? If not, that will be the next day, January 31st at 11:00 a.m. We'll hold the ribbon cutting for the Ridgeway Recreation Center. The invitations have gone out last week. That address is at 1900 U.S. Highway 21 in Ridgeway. So we invite all members of counsel in the Ridgeway community to come out to enjoy that ribbon cutting. Next, we want to make counsel aware with the renovations at the county courthouse. Phase 3 of those renovations will be starting in, end of January, start of February. They'll be doing asbestos abatement, which will affect the courtroom. So we've heard from the clerk of court that the courtroom will be closed after February 2nd due to this construction. We're anticipating all of this work between all of the floor levels of the courthouse to last up to a year or more, because there's HVAC upgrades, electrical upgrades, along with the asbestos abatement and then other upgrades to the old courthouse facility. The new portion of the courthouse just received a certificate of occupancy in the last week or so. But in the time that the courthouse is closed, they'll be using the family court courtroom for court services. And so we'll be working with the public information officer and with the clerk of court to make sure we get all the information out about the fact that those court hearings will be happening in the family court courtroom instead of the main courtroom in the courthouse during the phase 3 of the construction. And then also, finally, from my part, we just, we mentioned at the December meeting that the county had to have a committee for state accommodation tax and the distribution of the state accommodation tax. Those applications are now open for members who are interested in serving on the state accommodations tax committee that the county's put together. If you go to the county's website under news, there's more information about the committee and what the members have to, they have to come from the hospitality industry, the majority of the members. Only two can be at large that are not in hospitality. So anyone who is interested in serving on that accommodations tax committee can go to the Fairfield County website and get more information.
The December 2023 finance report, you already have in your possession. This report runs from fiscal year July 1 to December 31st, 2023. Everything that has been posted as of December 31st, 2023, shows revenue of $28.5 million, expenditures of $22.5 million. So basically, approximately, I'm rounding, SX of revenues over expenses of $6 million. And if you have more detailed questions, then I can investigate and look those particular line items up if you like.
Can you tell, can you tell us where we would find that tax, the obligations that we pay the IRS on this report?
On the second page, that would actually be classified under general operating. That should be classified under the general operating account.
Thank you.
The $6 million, that's actually how much is in our general fund?
For this fiscal year, not, that's not including the existing fund balance. So this is just the activity from July 1 to December 31st. So all collections from July 1 to December 31st is the $28 million, if you see under budget minus year-to-date transactions. And you will see the expenses from July 1 to December 31st is the 22, rounded $22.5 million. So that is everything that has been posted to the general ledger as of, well, since this is ran as of December 31st, 2023. There should not be any revenues unposted and should not be any expenditures unposted. So this is where we stand right now, current fiscal year.
$6 million.
Current fiscal year, yes. These reports does not include the existing fund balance rolling over to a total. This is what is called an expense report, revenue and expense report. So for fund balance, that's a more detailed report, which would be a balance sheet report that would show all the assets, liabilities, and fund balance all rolled up. This asset and, incomes, excuse me, a balance sheet report would not, would not give you by department. It will give you everything, kind of, it's, it's a longer report. This is really pretty much just a snapshot, snapshot of the current fiscal year.
Can we get a trial balance as of 6/30/23?
Yes. You can get the same one that we actually sent to the auditors and it would have to be emailed to you. So yes.
Any more from Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson, I hate to put you on the spot because the decision probably has not been made as of right now. And if it's not, that's fine. But with the weather coming in for tomorrow, has there been any consideration for county offices? Any updates that you can provide on county offices closing early and recycling centers, those kind of issues where people would be in danger?
Well, actually, we've already have met with 911 and we're gonna meet again first thing in the morning to make an assessment. Because with some of the county offices, I believe in Richland, they hadn't, the offices hadn't called, the schools, of course, have already called it with the winds, et cetera. So, yeah, but the government offices, I have not unless they've done it while we were in here. And also, I checked with the town of Windsboro and they may be closing, considering closing at noon. But we have an 815 work number, so if we call it due to weather conditions, the employees have been told previously to call the 815 work number and they'll be recording.
Okay. If you would just keep counsel informed and
Yes.
Put it on our website, that'd be great.
Okay.
Next, we are down to item 15A, clerk of counsel's report, 2024 council meeting calendar. This is a action item. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of counsel. Several days ago, you were presented with a tentative Fairfield County meeting day calendar. And as the chair stated, we just need approval if you all agree to move forward with these meeting dates that have been proposed.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the 2024 council meeting calendar. Any discussion? See it none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect, 7-0, to approve the 2024 council meeting calendar. Next, we are down to item 16, county council time. Any council members wish to be heard? Ms. Green.
Members of council and our citizens, yes, I was surprised at the December 11th meeting. I was asked multiple times if I recall approving, approval by council of the amounts stated. No, I have no record of approving the payments, so I just need that to be recorded. I've received multiple supporting documents from administration concerning the IRS fines and penalties. Tonight, I was told where they may be reconciled on our monthly statements that we've received. Our monthly, I guess we are calling them, not budget statements, what do we want to call them again? Expense reports. Secondly, I'd like to address delayed audits. That's one of the things that we certainly would not, should not have here for the number of years that we've had them. I know that even though the state allows three months to complete the audit, it doesn't mean we have to wait three months to complete it. So I want to make sure that the citizens know and that our administration works diligently to make sure that those audits are completed as soon as possible. If one auditing company moves us to the end of the auditing process, then we need to find another auditing company. Citizens of Fairfield County deserve better accounting of our funds and I know that we can do better.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I, if I'm not out of order, I just think that Ms. Johnson should be given an opportunity to address some of the accusations that's being presented here. If she feels that she should, if not, I'm just, I'm just not happy with the, a lot of the accusations and acution and the way things are being presented that may not be, I mean, it's, it's bad. But sometime we point But sometime we point fingers and we have three pointing fingers pointing back at us. And I just feel like she needs an opportunity to just kind of express her feelings and give us an, hear from her. I just want-
Wasn't prepared for it, but the IRS penalties are required to be paid by law. So basically, that's what you hired me to do. You hired me to clean it up. You hired me to find errors and exceptions, et cetera. Some people may make the comment that, oh, I should not have paid them. They're required by law. The IRS does not care if county council approves them or not approve them. It is required by federal law. If they were not paid, is county council willing to accept the responsibility of our assets being seized? Included in the packet that you did receive today on some additional IRS documentation, there's a letter in there saying it was gonna seize our assets. And county council also needs to realize their assets is not only our buildings and our land, but it, they could have also frozen our bank account. So my question is, pretty much, what was their expectation? I did what I was hired to do, and in essence, I followed the federal law. So does council think I should have not followed the federal law? The federal law does not care if council says, don't pay it or wait. I have another IRS letter right here. When I did the presentation on December 11, I told you the estimate that was told over the phone was 214,000, rounding. Now it's 222,000. So there's already $8,000 in penalties, interest, late to file, already built up on this account right now. So does council want me not to pay it, wait till the next council meeting, put it on the agenda? And what, it's been, what, two weeks maybe, since I mentioned the 214,000, it was already $8,000? So are we gonna continue to let it sit and wait? It is a violation of federal law. And that's just it. It's a violation of federal law. No matter what anybody says, it's a violation of federal law that should be paid, no matter who is sitting in the seat. Because they still should have done the exact same thing.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that, what, you know, bringing up the discussion about the, the audit is not an accusation toward anybody.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't take it as such.
I just really wanted to be clear, and I thought you did.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't. Thank you, though, for clarifying.
But I just, it's not to point fingers or-
No, I understand.
Yeah, anyway. And, and so, okay, that's all about that. And then the, I believe, Mr. Pullen can correct me, I think, is it February 1, Lieutenant Governor's gonna be in Ridgeway? Can I, can?
Yes, sir. For the council members, each of you should have received an invitation, be a punchbowl that all of the elected officials or most of the elected officials, we are limited on space, are invited to attend a luncheon with Lieutenant Governor Pamela Evatt. She will be in Ridgeway on February the 1st, and so you all are welcome to attend. I know that the Administrator, Deputy Administrator, and, and other staff have been invited. And then the public, small business leaders, every small business owner within the town limits of Ridgeway either has already been invited or will be invited soon, and then we'll be reaching out beyond that to Jenkinsville and Windsboro. Again, we're limited to about 40 people upstairs in Laura's Tea Room, but we, please, Members of Council, we'd love for you to join us on February the 1st so we can make a good showing and have a good turnout for her. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have, we have something on the 30th, 31st, and the, and the 1st, that's on the 1st. But also, I think we're scheduling, planning on scheduling animal ordinance for the, what's that committee?
Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Public Service Committee, for the animal ordinance and short-term rental on Wednesday, January 17 at 5 o'clock. So that's, that's the plan. Thank you.
Ms. Waringen? Yes, on Wednesday night, we interviewed three candidates. Administration handed out 27 questions that we could choose from to question the candidates. I assumed that our attorney and the administrator were telling us what we could and couldn't ask, and I was informed by our Chairman that I could not ask our current interim administrator any questions about the, the $1.2 million in IRS penalties. We are the governing body for Fairfield County, and I don't know where all this is gonna stop, but professional leadership with experience is what Fairfield needs, and the people are demanding it, and we as council need to listen to our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waringen. You know, I just want to say that I understand everyone's concerns concerning the money with the IRS, paid to the IRS. It's been stated numerous times that the money was thrown away. It was not thrown away. I think we all know that if you owe the IRS, you have to pay the IRS. It's not money thrown away. I've heard citizens' questions, so I asked Mr. Morgan to, from a legal standpoint, if he could comment on this. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Members of Council. I've tried to research the law into this particular area, look and see if there's any cases or statutes that address this, as well as reviewed some of the documents from the IRS that the county has in its possession. And as everybody is manifestly aware, the county is required to pay certain taxes to the IRS, and obviously, failure to pay those taxes could result in additional fines and penalties, and then obviously, in certain circumstances, could ultimately end up being considered a crime, at, you know, if it reaches, obviously, a particular level. And as I understand and what I heard, obviously, when the council hired the interim administrator, there was some direction for the cleaning up or straightening up or looking into inquiring as to the county's finances. So as part of that process, as I understand it, this financial review, so to speak, it came to light that there had been certain taxes that had not been paid by the county, and that these, these notices, in essence, hadn't been handled, they'd come from the IRS, but they hadn't been handled, and so what ended up happening, that these, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, that these notices are addressed to Fairfield County Council. That's what it says on the notices themselves. It goes to Fairfield County Council. And they had, these notices had gone back, all the way back to 2017, so there was notices from tax years 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and now 2022. And obviously, those notices span multiple different councils, some individuals were present, some on council were not present, had different administrations, so on and so forth. And I've read some of the notices, and in particular, there was one that pointed out, and it said that, you know, there had been multiple attempts, in fact, there was a two-year period of time in which the, the county was given to try to bring these particular taxes current, and it was never done. And for whatever reason, I wasn't, I'm not casting any aspersions on that, but that failure, the IRS, if you look at the notice, the council said that it would be considered as willful non-compliance and could lead to not only additional fines and penalties, but the, the levying, and as Ms. Johnson pointed out, that doesn't necessarily mean just a seizure of a physical asset, it could also be financial accounts and assets as well. So as we've heard, the county administrator in order to comply with the federal law, and I think it's, just want to make sure, because it has been pointed out, that payment of those, those, those taxes also included the fines and the penalties, which continue to grow. So if there had been waiting too much longer, then obviously, those penalties and fines would have continued to grow. I mean, those taxes were paid pursuant to the provisions of the South Carolina Home Rule Act, and as I understand it, what the instructions of council were, is part of cleaning up and taking care of this tax process. Now, I have gone and I have searched, and there's no specific case on point in South Carolina that I'm aware of that addresses the requirements of a county council and a county administrator in order to pay those taxes, whether there's a process by which there needs to be a supplemental budget appropriation, anything like that. The code is silent as it relates to that, and I think, in all honesty, in my opinion, is because it's presumed that a county would pay its taxes. And it's a situation wherein it's presumed that a county or a governmental agency will comply with the laws and the rules, and therefore, really, there's nothing that specifically states in this instance, well, if you don't pay this, and there's back, you know, goes back several years, what that process is. But there is the general provisions that are provided, that the county administrator is required to make sure it, it keeps up with the obligations, the financial obligations of a county. But that being said, if this council wants, I can draft a resolution, and I can present it at the next council meeting, which this council could then vote upon and ratify the payment of those back taxes, fees, and penalties. So we can do that if that's what this council would like.
I'm hearing everything that's been said, you know, about it's a federal tax and it has to be paid, but I haven't heard, why wasn't council notified?
Hey, Ms. Roseborough, I apologize, I can't speak as to the notification, I'd have to defer to the Administrator for that.
I know that some of you may not remember, but I did make mention of it, not in an email. Sometimes it was just when I came in here to just quickly say, hey, I got some IRS payments that I'm looking into, and that I will be bringing it to council. But I did tell several of you additional information that said, and I said it, I said that I'm getting these payments, these bills, they are coming in quick. Beverly Mosey, the Finance Director, she had called the IRS, I think, maybe four to five times, trying to figure out what was going on. I even made a statement that said, okay, if I bring a tax bill, $368,000, in public without me knowing what it's about, et cetera, all of you are gonna ask a whole bunch of questions that I can't answer. It took several, several, several telephone calls with the IRS to find out exactly, when did you get this? What was it about? You know, and then recently, I just sent you today additional letters. I guess that's probably about, combined, it ought to be about 60 sheets of paper, where, because the comment had been made, I believed about, where were all these other ones? I mean, it had to be something in the file. When we brought this to you, we were looking in, excuse me, Ms. Mosey was looking in one section, trying to find any type of reports to show, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, the succession of all of these. Okay, then on Friday, she went to another box to look, and she found a file, and that is the file that you all have been, have, have received, which includes, as Mr. Morgan said, a statement about living our property. And it includes a letter, something stating about, I guess evidently, because, like I said, I can't have all the trail, what letter came here, 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 but one of the letters said that evidently, they gave a grace period of two years, and, and that's what the letter says. You have it all, this is, they gave the county two additional years. It said, we allowed, IRS allowed two additional years, and it also states in the letter, however, it's been past those two years. So it has taken a lot of time to try to figure this out, and we still don't have everything figured out yet, as in what other bills are going to come. Well, we already know what 2021 is gonna be coming eventually, but that's pretty much how it, it went. No, I did not send an email, and I don't know if some of you remember that I made a comment to you. Some of you did, some of you actually kept calling me and asking me about, have you figured out everything yet? Are you ready to present to council? So yes, I did. If some of you don't remember, if I didn't give enough detail, then I apologize for that. But regardless, I paid this, and as Tommy said, it's required to pay, so, you know, unless council tells me otherwise, this $222,000, I'm gonna pay unless you tell me right now, don't pay it, and it's on record that you're telling me not to pay it. That's all I need to know, because there's gonna be more coming in. If I don't get this paid by the deadline, and they don't get it in, then I'm probably gonna get another bill with a little bit of extra penalties and interest on it. If you prefer to pay it after a resolution, as, as Tommy has said, that is completely fine with me, then you direct me to do so.
When did you make the first payments?
I don't have the actual check copies with me. If I knew you were gonna ask that, then I would, but I think it was June. I think, I think, because I don't have the check copies with me. But, yes, you have check copies, yes. Thank you. I have May 4, and you, and you have all of these, thank you, Ms. Green. I think that may have, may have been the first.
So you paid them in, you paid them in May, and then you totals in, in June, in December, about the totals?
No, ma'am, you were one of the ones that was calling me, asking me about the total, because I did tell you that we had these IRS payments, so no, um, yes, because you and I had several conversations about this, you had asked me when it was coming forth, I told you that I was still investigating them, because I didn't want to come to council half-stepping and telling you I have these bills, but I have no idea what they were, what they pertain to. And if you look at your packet, and if you look at some of the bills that the IRS sent, just like the first one, it's a prior balance of 193 and a penalty assessment of 192. That didn't tell me anything, didn't tell me anything at all. According, this says notice date, April 24, that's the date it was mailed to the IRS. When we finally got it, Ms. Mosey made a phone call and started asking about exactly what it was, because when it's a roll forward and we charged you a penalty, honestly, if you look at this first one, you can't, I can't tell anything about what this is and why we're gonna pay it. So we had to call the IRS before we even determined what, what it was related to. And they were able to give us sufficient information about this particular transaction or this particular penalty, and then Ms. Mosey is also in your packet, and it's attached to one of these checks. Ms. Mosey also asked, because it was so much coming through, and we started making payments, Ms. Mosey asked the IRS, will you send us a transmittal? You will see that in here, of what the penalties are, what has been paid, any adjustments, and what is the payoff amount. So you will have all of that in there, you will have everything that we have, you have. And also, with the letters, you, if you look at the statements, you could see some of the interest, just for, by the time they sent it to us, some of the interest was already $23,000 already, and it was climbing. So this will tell you the penalties, this will tell you the interest, it will tell you pretty much everything that you need to know. We were sending these out certified, the payments out certified, because we wanted to make sure that the IRS got them in a timely manner, and that they, and we would have proof that we did pay it, so we wouldn't incur any additional late fees. And Ms. Mosey actually had to do that, because when we got another bill that looked like a duplicate, she was able to trace it back, call the IRS and say, we did send it to you. And what did the IRS say? You gotta show me proof. So she was able to get the council check, and she was able to get her certified receipt proving that she had already sent it. So everything you have is in your packet, even if it's a letter that came that did not have a fee, or just basically said, we are waiting on something, or we contacted you several times, you have- several times, you have all of that. Every time we find something, we send it to you. Like I said, we just found that Friday and we went ahead and I sent it to you today for you to look over.
But even before you knew what it was, you had to pay it in June or May or whatever before you actually knew?
No, ma'am. I called, excuse me, Ms. Mosey called. I didn't pay it without knowing what it was because I didn't know if it was a mistake or not. If I got a bill for $386,000 and it says prior balance 193,000, it says current balance of 192,000, no, ma'am, I did not pay it until the IRS was called and they sent a transmittal. They said, this is what happened, this is what this bill, it had to tell me the tax year. It had to document the tax year, it had to document, we had to document the form, what form was late. They told us when the form was received. We then found additional, some additional letters later that had additional correspondence that the IRS had already sent the county, saying, we have contacted you multiple times. You have that letter. You didn't have it prior to, but you have it now because we just found it. Everything was not in the same spot, in the same file as we found them. So that's why we just located these on Friday. But I will say that we did, I did contact a specialist, I guess, that does appeals and asked, you know, how much it would cost and give them a little detail about what we paid and how much. And her name is Ms. Way and she initially, after looking at the tax code law, she said that we could attempt, she could attempt to get the 2017 back. She felt confident about the 2017. But for any 941 forms, she stated that if it was just simply the fact that it was late or not done in a timely manner or had an error on it, then she said that more than likely you will not get those back because it has to be a reason associated with it. And she stated that more than likely, we wouldn't get those back. You also have in your packet, we have not found the letter yet that was sent, prepared and sent to the IRS, but we, there's a letter, an IRS letter, that indicates that something was sent to the IRS in an appeal for 2017 requesting that the fees not be paid. So basically asking for relief. According to, again, we can't find the letter, but I'm certain there is one, the original letter. Because our person that's, we hope to do the appeal says she needs that letter. So right now, we're searching for the original letter because she needs to know what it actually says. But in the IRS correspondence back in one section, it did state that your request was denied because it didn't have a valid, I can't remember the exact words, but it didn't have a valid reason for it not being successfully submitted and accepted. So we're in the process now of at least trying to find that letter. So we can use that as a basis to revise it and then send it to the IRS in the hopes that we can at least get that one back.
I think that what the citizens are wanting to know is why didn't you come to us when you paid it? Why didn't you come to us in June or May or whenever it was that you paid it and bring it to us then? That's what is being asked of me.
Yes, I understand that. And again, I'm going to defer back to one of two things. Number one, as I was getting a payment, another one was coming. Number two, it's a federal law, I had to go ahead and pay them. And so I understand what you're saying, but I needed to go ahead and get these paid. And as we're trying to figure out, one, we got three other ones lurking behind us. But yeah, I do understand what you're saying and I really don't have an answer for that and say, I felt that I needed to go ahead and pay them to save the county some additional monies, but yes, but I understand that.
They're just wanting to know why you didn't tell us in June.
I think I've already answered that. Some of you already knew. You had verbal conversations with me. You called me on the phone and you were asking.
The county, the people.
No, I understand that. But also at the same time, it shouldn't be left totally up to me also, because I report to you, you all report to the citizens of the county. But also at the same time, when I informed you about this, you had every right to say, hey, let's bring this, I want to go ahead and do this now. No, you did not. So no, it, all of it don't, does not need to lay on me when I provided the information. Counsel, who has been, who had been informed, still had the option of saying, no, let's go ahead and let's do this now. But I do understand what you're saying.
Ms. Johnson, thank you. You know, I guess my question is, you know, this, this has carried on for six years with different councils, different administrators, different people in finance, different people in human resources. And I'm not here to finger point on anyone. I need to know, is there a way, and I want to know if you can, because from what I'm seeing in my documents, it seems like these things are coming in every time you turn around, there's a different document that's coming in. Is there a way for the IRS to tell you today what exactly will eventually be the total outcome of what we owe the IRS? And you don't have to answer that now, but it just, it seems like we pay one and we get another one. I would never tell you not to pay the IRS. If you've got one on your desk now that needs to be paid and council can disagree with me, but if we already incurred $8,000 more in the last two weeks of taxpayer money that's being paid out, we don't need to sit around and let these things continue to add up and not pay these bills. And if this needs to go before council for a vote and council wants to say, don't pay them, and then we can have a vote and say, don't pay the bills. The second question I have is, has procedures been put in place to make sure that this does not happen again? I'm hearing that one department had credentials, another department was supposed to have credentials. We don't know who had credentials and I don't think we will ever figure out who had credentials at that time with all the turnover and who was in finance, who wasn't in finance, who was in, I don't know. But have we established with IRS, a contact person who is responsible, that they will make contact with going forward, that we can make sure? But it don't, it don't only need to be one person, because I feel like if one person is responsible, that person for some reason leaves the county. And then who, who then is getting the emails? Who's got credentials to make sure that this continues to go like it needs to go?
Two people have already been added to the IRS list. So when they send out a letter, it's supposed to go to two different people, addressed to two different people. Also, when it comes to credentials, credentials are IRS credentials. So whoever is in the position has to request the credentials from IRS. You are putting in your name, address, your social security number, sometimes you're doing that login, me ID and all of this. And then they have to basically do an authentication to determine if they're going to give you the credentials. So in the HR department, they have sent off their request already because you cannot use the credentials of the other person that's no longer there. You cannot do that. It's not a generic credential. It has to be associated with a person that works for the county. And also, since the burden of proof with paying these files on the county, any documents or checks that are now mailed to the IRS, they are being sent certified. So we can have proof, signed receipts, so we can have proof that they did in fact receive it.
Let me ask you another question, so we all can have a clear understanding. What I have in front of me is, unless I'm wrong, correct me, does not look like emails. It looks like actual statements that were sent to someone.
IRS doesn't send emails. They send letters.
Okay, okay. So everything is sent to?
Everything is letters. There are no emails sent by the IRS.
Okay. And I guess what I asked a few minutes ago, is there any way of knowing today at this council meeting, exactly what is left to owed to the IRS? And there's not, and if you need to research it, I'm good with that?
I have to go buy the bills. The only bill that I've gotten so far is this bill that's in question. But in my presentation to you, I also told you that the healthcare, on December 11th, that the healthcare forms for 2021, that is still pending. So I can't give you an amount at all on that.
Right. And you, and you said we are trying our best to appeal whatever we can appeal.
We are going to appeal. I would have to bring a contract, an agreement to council. Hopefully, I would have that done the next meeting, where we'll have a contract, Tommy will have to look over it before you, where the company is willing to actually help us with doing an appeal. And I already know it's a very long process, but doing an appeal.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
And Ms. Johnson, you know, I just want to put on the record, I don't think there was no malicious intent on your part, administration's part, anybody's part, finance, uh, finance department, to intentionally deceive the citizens of Fairfield County or intentionally to deceive any council member up here. I think you did what you thought was in the best interest of Fairfield County. We owe the IRS and, and like I stated a few minutes ago, I would never tell you not to pay the IRS. And I think if it was anybody else in your position, sitting in that administrator's role, would have did what they thought was best to protect Fairfield County. And I don't think you did anything with a willful intent to deceive anyone.
Mr. Chair, I just, I agree with those comments and I don't believe that either. And that's the reason I asked for the discussion of a forensic audit, just to clear the air for whoever is involved in all of this and just, and I would never say not to pay the IRS either. I say pay the IRS, but I would also say appeal for any reimbursements we could get. But also, I would say that, as I think Mr. Roseborough was questioning, I don't, I just don't think we were all aware, some of us might have been, but I don't think we were all aware of the large payment several months ago. And that would be something I think we need to know, you know, as soon as possible when something like that comes up. But yeah, I think we definitely have to pay what's owed, but I think we need to appeal every avenue because this is a very large amount of money. But that's all I've got. Thank you.
Any other council members? Next, we are down to executive session. In executive session, item A, receipt of legal advice regarding the lawsuit Town of Windsboro versus Fairfield County, number 2022-CP-2000105 and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70A2. Item B, receipt of legal advice and discussion of the employment of a county administrator pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70A1. Item C, receipt of legal advice and discussion regarding ordinance number 830, an ordinance of the county council, the Fairfield County approving the application to the Central Midlands Council of Government for certain amendments to the 208 Order Quality Management Plan for the Central Midlands Region, a supplement to a intergovernmental sewer infrastructure agreement and other matters related thereto pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70A2.
Most approved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, seven zero, we are now in executive session. Let the record reflect seven zero. We are now in executive session.
Do I have a motion to exit executive session?